Tuesday, October 15th, 2019, I'd like to call the Fitchburg City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I would ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting, please identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Is there any such individual? Seeing none, Counselor Zarella, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
President Koushmeric.
Present.
Counselor Bushman.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Deenatali.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Swalia.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Here.
Public forum, anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are here addressing public hearing petitions, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address to record and the item which you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Mr. Bushman. Good evening.
Good evening. I want to thank you, Mr. President, for inviting me in the city council. I want to recognize Doug Bushman from the Fitchburg Housing Authority. We have three commissioners present, David Rousseau, David Basilio, Andrew Van Hesinga, who are present. Plus, I have Mark Cunningham, who's president to the local 2034 Maintenance Union. I have Andrew Scoog, Deputy Director, Janout Hebert, Director of Family Housing, and Cheryl Kula, who is the Assistant Director of Elderly Housing. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. I was before the city council in February of this year, asking for the city council's support for the Housing Authority's Pathway to Success Plan that we proposed to the state for additional money to fund us due to the separation from the Leominster Housing Authority. The board approved the plan, the tenant associations approved the plan, the city council approved the plan, and the local union. After months of negotiations with the state, I'm happy to report to the city council and to the city that our request for additional money was accepted. And we had requested around $600,000, but we received probably over $800,000. We've increased our maintenance staff by 50%. We've upgraded our equipment, our offices. We've had training for staff, a wide variety of areas, not for one-time success, but a pathway for continued success from now into the future. It was many months of working with the state, and I will be amiss of not thanking Linda Byrne, our Chairwoman of the Fitchburg Housing Authority. She's a courageous woman who really, when she has to take a stand, she makes that stand after gathering all the evidence. In June of this year, DHCD sent several dignitaries to Fitchburg to hear our pitch as to why they should invest in the Fitchburg Housing Authority. I invited Mayor Deenatali to attend to kick off the presentation at Day Street. And he gave a presentation, I wish it was taped, Mayor, it was phenomenal. And he gave a presentation as to why DHCD should invest and grant the money to the Fitchburg Housing Authority. They were absolutely and totally impressed with what the mayor had to say, but they were also equally impressed that a mayor of a city took the time to meet with officials from Boston about public housing, which is a rarity, unfortunately, in my profession. So, Mayor, on behalf of the housing board and to the staff and to our tenants, I want to thank you. You were instrumental in helping us secure this funding, which is not going to go to waste. But I'd like to report to the city, we've made dramatic improvements in the last, I believe, nine months in Fitchburg public housing. I've dealt with many city councils individually when you've had questions. I'm happy to report that green acres and other properties are almost garbage-free. There's no graffiti. We've encouraged some tenants to move along that couldn't follow the rules. We've housed some great Fitchburg families that need a break. So, on behalf of the Housing Authority, I just want to thank all of you in the community. And thank you, Mayor, for all the help you've given us.
Mr. Bushman, to you, your administration, your staff, the union, and the commissioners, thank you for all of your hard work these past nine months, and thank you for being with us this evening. Counselors, he sent a communication to us, but it was really in an effort to be able to appear before us tonight just to thank us. So, I think that shows your resolve. So, thank you again for being with us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Drigney, good evening.
Good evening, counselors. Thank you, Mr. President. With me this evening is our Deputy Commissioner of the Department of Public Works, Wastewater Division, the Professor Jeffrey Morowski. We're here speaking on Order 248-19, and we're asking for suspension of the rules. These are two utility easements with Unitil. Our city solicitor's office, as well as Mr. Morowski, have been working closely with Unitil on upgrading and moving the gas utility lines that service the East Treatment Plant. We're asking for suspension of the rules as Unitil's trying to get this work done before the season turns and it gets too cold.
Motion for suspension of the rules on 2419, 24819.
I have a motion and second for suspension on 24819. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the matter is before you.
Motion to approve 24819.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 24819. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Bushman.
I was going over that print that you sent us. I really had a hard time to understand where you're moving the gas line. Where is it coming in from? Did I try to figure it out like Clinton?
The gas service comes from Crawford Street. It cuts across the airport property and it enters into the wastewater property on the south side of the Nashua River. What Unitil's proposing to do, I think, is the most beneficial relocation of the gas service line, and that's to skirt the easterly edge of the airport property. So, it's the least impactful as possible on the airport property.
Okay. All right. It's okay. This is our answer.
Counselor Swalia.
This will be like a bridge structure that goes across the Nashua River?
No, they're actually utilizing or proposing to utilize a directional drill process. So, there'll be directional drilling, a carrying pipe, which will be HDPE, butt fusion welded HDPE. It'll be a four-inch diameter HDPE, and then they'll slide through that four-inch carrier pipe, the actual service line.
So, kind of down, over, like that?
Right. They can change directionality in three dimensions with that. There'll be a launching pit and a receiving pit.
So, there won't be anything going over the river?
Correct.
Very nice. Okay. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to approve 24819. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous.
Thank you, counselors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during public forum at this time? Seeing none, Counselor Donnelly will now hear a report from the Committee on Records.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Motion for acceptance.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. Motion carries. Communications from his honor, the mayor, two such appointment letters, first for Mr. Mike Lee as a member of the Human Rights Commission, term to expire November 1st, 2022, and second for Ms. Alana Sofia Wakar as a student associate member of the Human Rights Commission, term to expire November 1st, 2021. We also have a communication from Fitchburg Housing Authority, Pathway to Success update, and a Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities, Unitil, for approval of 2016-2018, three-year term report. Unless there are objections, those will be placed on file in the city clerk's office, and the appointment letters will be referred to the Appointments Committee. Next on the agenda, we have Council as a whole committee oral report, October 15th, 2019, at 6:30 PM. There was one item on the agenda, the appointment of Ms. Mary Di Alderete, City Clerk in Training, effective October 21st, 2019, and City Clerk, effective January 8th, 2020, for a term to expire January 8th, 2023. All members of the committee were present, and it was voted unanimously.
Motion to approve the report.
I have a motion and second to approve the report from the Council as a whole committee. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the swearing-in?
Please raise your right hand and repeat afternoon to take offense. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
As City Clerk in Training.
As City Clerk in Training.
For the city of Fitchburg.
For the city of Fitchburg.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Fitchburg.
Thank you so much. Very soon.
Congratulations.
I want to thank Ms. Mary Di Alderete for not only joining us this evening, but look
forward to working with her in the years ahead. Very excited, but also it's bittersweet as our current city clerk, Anna Farrell, will be leaving us, though not this evening, and we still have an opportunity to celebrate the time that she's given to both this council and this city. So, we'll do that another evening with her or against her will, if necessary.
Boy.
So, I also want to thank the members of the Search Committee who helped us through this process, including two who are with us this evening, Mr. Calvin Brooks and Ms. Susan Davis, as well as Jody Joseph, Jeff Bean, Francisco Ramos, and Counselor Walsh. So, thank you all for your efforts as part of the process in really finding a stellar candidate to help move the city and the city council forward. Moving on on the agenda, next we have Finance Committee meeting of October 8th, 2019. Counselor Deenatali.
Mr. President, Finance Committee met last Tuesday, and to put up the following, we actually reviewed the auditor's report, 23319. We raved the reading and placed it on file, and then we took up four orders involving a grant for public safety and security, for 911 emergency procedural training for the fire and the police. We also adopted a grant for $248,564 to convert Fitchburg High School to LED lighting. We also approved an order for $1.456 million, which was the mayor's supplemental fiscal year 2020 operating budget, to the school department, which would meet net school spending. This was added funding that came from the legislature's passage of the budget we were previously using in our budget, the governor's figures, and these came in higher than the governor's. So, this money is going to the schools to be used for school infrastructure improvements and educational programming. And then 23819 was authorizing the city to participate in the commercial property assessed clean energy program, PACE Massachusetts.
Make a motion, will you accept the financial report?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Finance Committee report. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. Motion carries. Legislative Affairs Committee oral report, Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met this evening at 6 o'clock. There were two items on the agenda. Petition 10819, it was a petition by Gene Fisher to petition the city council to respond to climate change. That was granted leave to withdraw at the request of Ms. Fisher. 22919, Counselor Michael Koushmeric to delete city ordinance, Chapter 42, and replace with the enclosed wage theft and responsible employer ordinance. That was approved in petition form as amended with the recommendation that it be sent back to the city solicitor to be converted to an ordinance.
Motion to approve the report?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the Legislative Affairs Committee oral report. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Zarella.
I'd just like to note that there are a few stylistic and textual amendments that will be inserted after this point and then presented to the council in the form of the ordinance.
As is typically the case when we accept a petition reflecting an ordinance, the idea is that, you know, I didn't submit an ordinance as it is. This allows the city solicitor to go over with a fine-tooth comb and ensure stylistically, grammatically, and legally that everything is in order and properly jives with our city code.
Yes, and I only mention this this time because, as Council President says, this is entirely standard procedure. But in this case, the petition that we received was very, very thorough and very, very close to a final ordinance format, commendably so. So, I just wanted to make sure that no one is confused and thinks that we are voting on an actual ordinance tonight.
Understood. I have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. Motion carries. Public hearing, 24519, Fitchburg Municipal Airport to grant, as amended, the existing license to store flammable liquids on land owned by the city of Fitchburg and operated through the Fitchburg Municipal Airport Commission. Request seeks to increase the allowable storage of combustible liquids at the airport from 20,000 gallons above-ground storage tanks to 32,000 gallons, as outlined in the enclosed petition. I now declare the hearing open. I would ask the individuals representing in the matter to please be seated at the center And if you'd kindly introduce yourself for the record.
Peter Kettle, Vice Chair of the Fitchburg Airport Commission.
Nick Ippolito, Project Manager with Gale Associates.
Wonderful. Thank you both for joining us. Feel free to be seated. And if you could just walk us through briefly what is before us.
Before you should be an application to increase the storage capacity from 20 gallons to 32, I'm sorry, 20,000 gallons to 32,000 gallons of either aviation fuel or Jet A. This comes on the heels of a project to design a self-service avgas dispensing system and tank at the airport. One of the stipulations per the permits was to amend the airport's fuel storage permit, which we went for Planning Board last week on this evening, were approved contingent upon the Fire Department giving final authorization. And now we are here to request that the city council consider this petition.
Questions, comments from counselors? Counselor Green?
When will the Fire Department come and make that determination?
We've been coordinating with them since last week's meeting. I have submitted the plans and specifications to them in all correspondence we have to date. We began coordination with them during the design of the project. We incorporated all of their requests into the project plans and specs, and the most recent correspondence I have from Jordan, is it Phil Jordan? Said that he was happy with the plans and specifications, so contingent upon him signing off on the Planning Board's approval, we should be all set.
Thank you.
Counselor Caddy.
Is this going to be a new tank?
Yes, sir.
Is it above-ground or underground?
It is above-ground, 6,000 gallons.
Counselor Zarella.
Just for the record, have there been any past issues or concerns with the license as it exists?
Not to my knowledge.
No. I didn't think so. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions from counselors? All right, gentlemen, thank you. If there's anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the petition, now would be the time to speak. If there's anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition, seeing none, if all have been heard, declare the hearing closed. The matter is now before the council.
Motion to approve 24519.
Motion and second to approve, multiple seconds to approve, 24519. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. President, counselors, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a great future at the airport, a great future.
Why not?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, Orders Finance, 24619.
Motion for suspension on 24619. Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension on 24619. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. The matter is before you.
Move to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept 24619. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. Motion carries, 24719, ordered that the city of Fitchburg hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Expendable Trust not to exceed the amount of $13,885 for the replacement of fencing at Laurel Hill Cemetery.
Move to send this to Finance.
I have a motion and second to send to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. Motion carries. Orders Other, 24919, ordered that the Honorable Mayor Stephen Deenatali is authorized on behalf of the city of Fitchburg to facilitate and execute the attached community host benefit agreement with Caniberg LLC located at 310 Broad Street, Fitchburg, Mass. And 25019, ordered that the Honorable Mayor Stephen Deenatali is authorized on behalf of the city of Fitchburg to facilitate and execute the attached community host benefit agreement with the Healing Center LLC located at 346 River Street, Fitchburg, Mass.
I have to recuse myself from 24919.
Okay.
Can we talk about it? Not till she leaves. I don't care either way. You can do that. You can send them. The second one is...
So, counselors, you have the option to either adopt this under suspension of the rules or to send this...
Motion for suspension of the rules.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules in 24919. Speaking on the motion?
On the motion.
On the motion?
I don't know if I'm going to vote for this one tonight because it's just for suspension. Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind.
Motion and second for suspension, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is before you.
Motion to approve the order.
Motion and second to approve 24919. Speaking on the motion, Counselor...
Speaking on the motion, I think we as a city council should start really thinking about how many plant places we want to really start having in the city of Fitchburg. I mean, we've been very easy, very lax in what we're doing here, allowing everybody to come in. I understand it's giving us money and it's doing some of the other stuff, but I think we have to be more diversified in what we're doing and we're not doing it. We're just focusing on one item, one item only, and I really don't believe that that's the way to go. So, on this particular motion, I may vote against this because I'm not in favor until we set some kind of patent where we have so many and we say we have enough. And that's how I feel about this.
I would argue that particularly in this case, 24919, what we're looking at is cultivation.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, we have, to the best of my knowledge, we've had zero issues with cultivation. They provide all of the necessary security. They make improvements to the facility, and what we see is a net benefit to the community as a whole, both in terms of investment in the property as well as expansion of our tax base. So, in terms of cultivation, from what I've heard from both our residents and the discussion that this council has had, I'm excited to continue approving cultivation facilities that only help to improve our tax base. So, I have no issue whatsoever with moving forward with another cultivation facility. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Zarella.
I just have a quick question for the city solicitor. I know we have a cap on our retail locations. Do we have any similar cap on cultivation facilities?
No, there's not.
I didn't think so. I couldn't find one. Yeah, that's all. I just wanted to clarify that.
That I'm not...
Counselor Deenatali.
These are manufacturing jobs, and all of these facilities are redeveloped. You know, I understand the counselor's concern about this industry. We're not focusing only on this industry. The reason why this industry is getting so much attention is because in two short years, three short years, the voters of this city adopted on a state ballot question that they wanted to legalize recreational marijuana. And as part of that vote, in the text of the ballot, it specifically stated, treat it in a similar fashion to that of alcohol. I'm paraphrasing. But the reason why we're getting all these host agreements, whether it's cultivation or recreation, is because of that being decided upon. And it's still being asked of me today of, you know, we're going to become the capital. People have to understand what happened here. The voters allowed this to happen. And if the voters don't like it, there was an out for them, that is long past in my opinion, where they could have submitted a home rule, a ballot question, a local ballot question to overturn the vote of 2016, and nothing's happened. So, that's why they're coming here. We have to allow at least four of those kinds of facilities. We upped it to seven or eight to be on par with our alcohol establishments, the liquor establishments, not so much just everything else. That was the reason. So, we have to have four. We're allowing almost eight, up to eight, but people have to understand, it was the vote of the people that allowed this to happen. Now, as Counselor Koushmeric said to the President about cultivation, when it comes to cultivation, I'm no holds barred on cultivation because it's manufacturing jobs, it's revenue, it's tax money, it's bringing jobs to the city, it's redeveloping and repurposing buildings. I'm not a huge fan of the recreation side, but again, I just wanted to make that point because the council brought up. Recreation is here in the city because the voters willed it. It wasn't a unilateral action of the city council. I can't stress that enough because people today still say to me, why are you guys allowing this? We're not allowing it. We're doing what the will of the people was. Thank you.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had hundreds of thousands of vacant warehouse space in the city for many, 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 many years. And they come here because they want to occupy that space, which gives the person who invested in that property an opportunity to rent that. So, if there was no vacant space, they wouldn't be here. So, finally, we're, these investors that want to invest in Fitchburg, get a chance to rent or lease or sell their space. And there's no reason not to allow agricultural products to be grown in this warehouse space. So, we're finally using our warehouse space. At some point, hopefully, we'll be saturated, there'll be no more vacant space, they'll have to build new buildings, so, or approval.
Counselor Fleming.
The one thing about the cultivation is you don't realize that's what they're doing in those buildings. Because I've had a few people, you know, get upset that we're bringing this into the city. I says, well, we already have some of the cultivations, you know, buildings are already up and running. And people, we do. So, people don't know. They just hear it and they get all benoms about it. They don't realize that it's already in action, so... But the retail, I understand a little bit, but that's got to come in, too.
I have a motion and second to approve 24919. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
One in opposition, the matter passes nine to one.
Move for suspension, second.
I have a motion and second for suspension on 25019. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the matter is before you.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 25019. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Bushman.
I'm going to vote for 25019, but I want to make it very, very clear, it's in my ward, that we have a traffic problem down in Lower Claygon, and I really think the city should really look at this issue a lot closer. I know they hired, they're changing the light sequence down there at Wallace Ave, and that's where the backups are. And if that doesn't resolve the issue, I think we may have to go and look at it some other way because, I mean, the traffic's really backed up in that roundabout way up. And if you come in west from downtown Fitchburg, it goes all the way past, down past the Dairy Queen. And it's never been like that as long as I lived, until we did something down there underneath the bridge, and it hasn't been the same since the repairs. And to put a thing like this in Lower Claygon, I'm not going to vote against it, I'm going to vote for it, but I want to make it very clear that we have a problem at that roundabout. And something has to be addressed down there. And I have to give the new commissioner, Nick, at the DPW, time because he bought some pots, and they're waiting for them to come in for the lights. But if it doesn't resolve the issue... in for the lights. But if it doesn't resolve the issue by the time they open up, I don't know what's going to happen down there because it's really bad. Okay?
Counselor Squallia?
I'm also going to echo Counselor Boishman's sentiments. The majority of people, first of all, we're talking about a retail establishment at the old Cumberland Farms, at the Dexter Circle. And the majority of the people that I've spoken with like that location as a retail, but there, but the number one concern is traffic and getting into an accident, getting in and getting out. So I would hope that during the planning process that they've addressed the traffic issue at that location.
So I think, councilors, you know, there's two, at least two councilors with concerns about traffic in this location. What we can do is we can just send a memo to Commissioner Bossonetto, just making him aware that during the council meeting, there were expressed concerns. And we're asking that he and his department at least review the matter and be aware of those expressed concerns. Counselor Caddy?
There's no way that that new business will generate the amount of traffic that Cumberland Farms did with coffee and gas and a convenience store, not even close.
Counselor Zarella?
So I'm not intending to vote against this, but I do want to reiterate the concern that I raised before, which is that we're very rapidly approaching our cap on retail licenses before the first one has opened. And I think we need to be cautious in that, in that it may, as these shops start to open, we may become aware of things that we would want to take into account in allocating those remaining licenses. I wouldn't want to see us already have eight licenses out and then figure out that, you know, there's a problem or there's a huge unmet demand in one section of the city and then we have to up the cap or whatever. It could go in either direction. But I'd just like to advise that we look at this, that we look at the last, how many do we have left after this? One or two, right?
Three.
Three?
Two.
Two.
I think there's one candidate that has two.
Okay, so in allocating those last one or two or three licenses, I think we really should consider waiting until at least the first one opens up and just see how it goes.
Counselor Dean Atalley?
I respectfully disagree with my colleague. When we opened the floor up for eight of these businesses, to me, that was it. I mean, we didn't have a caveat in that eight licensure allowance that we're going to see how the first few happen and then we might bring it down. When we opened up to eight, we sent a message. And, you know, I'm looking at it from a fairness perspective, too. I mean, if we get another request down the road for a seventh license, we're going to tell that business owner, we're going to hold on you for indefinite period of time. But we didn't for the first six because we want to see how one of the first six happened. I don't think that makes a lot of sense from my viewpoint. I say we go up to the cap, first come, first served. And if the businesses aren't successful, then they'll fold and then someone will take their place. But we set the boundary at eight. We could have set it at four and done what you've said, but we chose not to as a council. So we set it at eight. So now that we've already allowed six, or will allow six after this, I don't know if it's right of us to say to the seventh or the eighth, we're going to hold on to you guys indefinitely until number one starts. And then how long does that assessment take? So, I mean, it's a race to get to the eight. And then after that, it's over. And then we see what happens. And if something doesn't pan out from it, then someone will take their place. That's how I see it. But I'm not in favor of taking a cautious approach after this one. That was the whole point of this whole discussion with me, four or eight, four or six. To me, it doesn't matter. You're going to have the same amount of clientele in the city of Fitchburg shopping for these products, whether you have four businesses or eight of them, you know? It's just going to have more traffic in the four instead of the eight. It's more spaced out. So if we were going to allow four or five, and there are all these seeming problems behind it allegedly, what's the difference if there's five or eight? The problems are still going to exist. So I think that what you're talking about was more appropriate and proper, and I think we did have that discussion and debate, when we voted on the license required, the limit, we already had that debate. We said eight, so that's what it's got to be. And if we were going to be cautious about this, then we should have allowed one and not allowed any more after that. And we didn't. We've allowed four more to come forward, potentially five. So, I mean, we're so far into it now. I say let it go to the cap and then we sit back and wait to see what happens. Thank you.
Counselor Donnelly?
Thank you. Counselor Dean Atalley said most of what I want to say, but if you want congestion, just open one. If you want to cut congestion by 50%, open two. If you want to stop congestion, open eight. And like he just said, if they survive, they survive. But there could be people right now that are investing time and money and effort into potentially opening a place. We've already said there's going to be eight. There's a couple more spots left. It's not fair to them right now to pull the rug out from under them because we're afraid of the unknown. I mean, these people are investing money. It's private money, can't get money from banks. So people are putting effort into doing these things. I think it's our job to continue in the direction that we've agreed that we're going to proceed with business in Fitchburg. Thank you.
Counselor Squallia?
For information from a communication from the Community Development Office, in September, September 17, the retail locations that are approved are as number six. So this would make the seventh. So, and the current limit is listed as eight per the councilors. And I, just to add, I would be in favor of lifting that cap in order to get more businesses in Fitchburg. Thank you.
Counselor Green?
I would also just, again, because we keep having this communication, I would again just like to have a communication from the Law Department on what we have awarded, where they're located, so that when these come up, we can look at it to say, man, we're really oversaturated in that area and we've got nothing in this area. So I would like to see a map that lists all the, the host agreements that have been granted for all of the marijuana use, retail, cultivation, so we get a sense on where they're located in our city and in our awards.
Counselor, I could be wrong. I thought our Planning Department sent that out to us via Mike O'Hara. If it didn't get sent out, we can certainly send that out. But certainly, we can, we can ask for the Planning Department to keep us updated every time a new license is granted and updated document. Counselor Zarella?
I'd just like to say, I think that my colleagues are entirely right in everything they said, with the sole exception of their interpretation of what I was trying to say, which is my fault, not theirs. I'm not at all trying to relitigate the cap issue. We voted for eight. We should have eight. And I'm not trying to say that we want to hold off because we need to be cautious about the impact of the existence of this industry in the city. Rather, I'm saying that when we look at these agreements, we need to be looking not just at the fact that we have an additional marijuana business in the city, but issues of citing, issues of, you know, lot appropriateness and things like that, the location. And I think that seeing what happens with the ones that have already been issued might inform the factors that we look at in determining the appropriateness of each individual, future one. Not whether we give the additional licenses, we will. But whether we think any individual operation is or is not a good thing, or whether we might want to ask for some additional stipulation to be included in the agreement due to some factor that came up. Or again, like I said, it could go the other way. We could have some of these open up and realize that some of the factors we've been considering or including in our agreements in the past aren't actually effective or necessary because something that we were concerned about turns out not to be a concern. Again, I'm not, I'm not at all saying we should put the brakes on anything. I'm only saying that if we have a limited number of licenses to give, it might be instructive to see what factors affect the existing businesses before deciding what factors to consider in the issuance of the remaining one or two licenses.
Counselor Walsh?
Thank you. When we voted on this initially, I think there was some debate as to whether we should have four or whether we should increase it to eight. And I remember being, you know, sort of compromised in my feelings about whether it would have an effect in, with law enforcement. And I remember I asked Chief Martino if that would have any effect, four or eight. And his feeling was that if you had four or eight, it wouldn't make any difference. And I think that was sufficient for me. So that's all I wanted to add.
I have a motion and second. Counselor Donnelly?
Thank you. Just a thing on demographics and big companies. We seem like, there are some people on the council think that they should, were afraid of overcrowding and where they're going to be cited. If McDonald's opens up, who opens up across the street? All right, down the street?
Burger King.
Burger King. I mean, so if Burger King opens up, who opens down the street? I mean, those are people that, they study demographics, they study business, they study accessibility. So I don't understand why the council, and I don't know how many people are qualified to make these judgments, that we are afraid of overcrowding in a particular area. I mean, sometimes it's just good things. And the powers that be and private investors, most of them have more knowledge about citing businesses than most of the councilors. So I'm just saying, I don't think it should be our worry. You may have concern, but Counselor Dean Atalley said, and other councilors said, some are going to survive and some aren't. If you look at John Fitch Highway and pizzas, back years ago on Summer Street, there was Nina's Pizza. And there were no, no pizzas on John Fitch Highway. I mean, they've come and gone and come and gone. I mean, there's places that are closed down, opened up, closed down. That's the way business is. But they all, not all, but so many of them went to John Fitch because that's where everybody went, so.
Counselor Dean Atalley?
Just on that point, I was reminded of the fact that there's several auto parts businesses on John Fitch within a stone's throw of each other, three or four. So like Counsel Donnelly said, it's a race, it's a race, it's competition. It's, so, I mean, yeah, that's, that's all. I just, that just popped in my head when he said that. It's, there's an example right there.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Ordinance, 251-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 3, Section 23 residency requirement of the Code of the City of Fitchburg by deleting it in its entirety, reference petition 93-2010, first reading.
Motion to send to a first reading?
Second.
Motion and second to send 251-19 to its first reading. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. If there are objections, we'll send petitions 252 up to and including 256-19 to their respective committees.
Mr. President, on dash, 252-19, I would like to send that to a Public Safety Committee and DPW Committee?
And DPW.
You mean Public Works?
Yeah, Public Works, yes.
Any, sorry, any issues or concerns with that? That said, we'll send 252, 256-19 to their respective committees, including the Public Works Committee on 252. We have committee matters, pending matters in both City Property Committee as well as Public Safety Committee requesting more time. If there are no objections, we will send those back to the committees for the time that they are requesting. Seeing no objections, that would conclude the agenda for this evening. I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We adjourn. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you.